Hey Bill.
Yes.
Is the county little league gonna go another day? Did they ask you for another day? Is it raining?
Technic?
Yeah. Not right now. They didn't, they didn't do it this weekend.
They did.
Really?
They were all set. They had hot dogs.
Oh, they like it.
Yeah.
I appreciate it.
Joe's got about a thousand hot dogs a lot.
Yeah, he does.
They don't wanna move it to, they don't want...
He said they had it.
I know we have a little bit.
No, they had it.
It started.
They did it.
They did it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Like they were just starting raining back in here. There's a big rainy season out there.
Hi. How are you guys?
Good.
Yeah, what's up? You're all the way down.
They stay back there and they, they run out. They skip a day.
Is it expensive to go there?
There's a light pole right there. Five miles. Oh, yeah. Not sorry. I gotta work on my train stuff.
Cause they get last. If I don't hear back.
They're getting ready to start this order back up.
They're still saying that our day's coming to this.
It's almost a dollar. Service. Those are people who get pruned.
Someone's getting it seen. That's all right. I'll trade him back. Did the, uh, Searle thing?
No, they have, they have. We're doing well. That's their own business. They just have to pay me as close as I can. Oh, that Friday.
It's probably the car, right? My last hour of time. I was watching all the cars coming to our lot.
No. Yeah, you are.
Is it, any parking that for sale? Parking lots are. I think by the time I left, I think it's most of the.
Our show is here already.
I said we're after transfer.
Five minutes ago, I had talked and I thought it was four minutes. Six. And, uh, I'm like.
Have you ever seen that?
Is it coming?
Too big.
I mean, it's a rubber.
So stiff. I've never really.
Yeah, well, that's a rubber. The answer is no.
Yeah, I guess it's true in a home.
The problem is, is they kind of. Women's on duty.
We'll get to it. All right, ten o'clock tomorrow.
I think a bunch of wheels. That those two.
No, it's back.
Maybe one has a picture. Did you ever turn that on yet?
We did. We were talking about.
I said ninety.
None of them.
Oh, it's revised again.
Go to that.
Just wear things.
She had to come use it.
That's great. Thank you. It's amazing.
Only one.
No. Even the adults. They did, they finished.
They may, I don't know.
Oh, no, they finished up. The neighborhood, that's what they do.
I need to get a floor. Let my neighbors.
I used to have a neighbor that.
They're building a six year.
Taxing.
Road is like. Yeah. Like fire. Of course, he's an early. Yeah.
I know.
You know. Yeah. Where do they have to go?
It's the bottom to directly draw.
I'll put them right on once. Why is it sticky?
And so was Jerry.
Maybe tell her. I have to reevaluate how I. You need me to go for it? You need to take care of the interaction of stuff.
Line up.
I'd like to call the Monday, June sixth, two thousand and sixteen city council into order. Please call the roll. Alderman Santee.
Here.
Alderman Glab.
Here.
Alderman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderman Curry.
Here.
Alderman Wimmer.
Here.
Alderman Peterson.
Here.
Alderman Condon.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The City of McHenry's mission statement reads as follows. The City of McHenry is dedicated to providing its citizens, businesses, and visitors with the highest quality of programs and services in a customer-oriented, efficient, and fiscally responsible manner. The first item on our agenda this evening is the public comment session, section. No one has signed in for that purpose this evening. Anyone want to address the council? Seeing none, looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Alderman Curry?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item G.
Item G, did you say?
Item G, I'd like to discuss separately.
Okay. Alderman Met?
Alderman Met.
Okay. Is there a second amendment motion, Alderman Condon? Discussion on those items, Alderman Curry?
Uh, yeah. Just a question on crack ceiling. The, the bid that thirty-three cents a linear foot, what is that a linear foot of? Is that, that's not street, is it?
I'm, I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Sorry.
Uh, the, the, uh, the bid that we have for thirty-three cents a linear foot, what is the linear foot? What does that mean?
That's, that's the length of the cracked ceiling.
So, so they have to go through and kinda estimate on these twenty-five streets we have, we estimate like how many feet of.
Well, yeah, what we did, we took last year's total, what we ended up with linear feet. It kinda came up at average, you know, on how the length of a street and we ballparked it that way. Um, but the bid is not to exceed, what is it, eighty-five thousand?
Right.
So, we'll keep going. I, I have somebody follow them, measuring behind them, and we'll keep going to get as close as we can to that eighty-five thousand, as many streets done.
Okay. I, I just was a little getting with the linear foot, meant whether it was the cracks or whether it was.
The actual crack.
If it was the streets, then we got forty-nine miles of streets and I didn't think, well, it's twenty-five streets, yeah, up to that, so. Okay, thank you.
Alderman Wimmer? Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Curry, do you have any questions?
On the consent agenda.
Okay, Alderman Wimmer?
Nothing.
Alderman Peterson?
Nothing.
Alderman Condon?
Uh, I did have one question on item E, the abandoned property, um, with the police department. It, has there ever been any consideration? I know in the past we've, we've, you know, had, we've had sales to get rid of some of that. Has there ever been any consideration to any donations to charitable organizations? Um, you know, with like maybe bikes for the kids or?
No, honestly, haven't, that hasn't. The bicycles, yeah, we've donated bikes to Garden Corner, we've donated bikes to kids, we've done that quite a few times. And we usually let them see, you know, if they've been abandoned and no one's claiming, we let them get the best of those bikes before we auction them. Yes, we have.
Okay, great, that's, that's all I want. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Santee?
I had a quick, uh, comment on B, that was, uh, nice that those numbers came in there. Did the partnership benefit us? Definitely, definitely? Was this your first year in this or?
First, first joint bid that we did, you know, on, uh, the crack ceiling and we're looking to do some more partners in future municipalities too.
Great, thank you very much.
Alderman Glab?
Yeah, how did we determine on these streets, uh, which ones we picked for the, uh, crack ceiling appropriate?
Seems to be roads that were paved like five or six years ago are the ones that are needed crack ceiling. So we kinda take an average of those roads that were done and then the street superintendent does a visual of that road.
It's the average rating on those streets.
Uh, sorry, I don't know.
They have fours or fives or, I mean, most of the threes, we're hoping, and I'm guessing they're just to get paid.
I'm guessing it's not higher than that, than a four or five.
So in other words, these are to maintain the roads that are in really good shape versus, I just don't wanna spend crack ceiling on something we're gonna do next year or the year after. That's, that's what I'm getting at.
No, we're not.
Okay. The other question I had is we, we budgeted a hundred thousand for it.
Right.
Why are we stopping at eighty-five?
As mentioned in the agenda supplement, we had spent some money or had previously approved some pavement preservation, the Reclamite, that were doing the four roads that we paved last year.
And that was fifteen thousand?
Fourteen.
Twenty feet something.
Yeah, fourteen something.
Okay, so that's why, so that was considered part of that hundred thousand dollar budget?
Right, it was pavement maintenance, a hundred thousand.
Okay. I thought we were crack ceiling only, so.
That's all I've got, thank you.
Just wanted to say that, uh, I'm glad to see that, uh, we're really taking a real proactive, uh, look at our streets and, uh, you know, needless to say, with the economy the way it was and everything else, uh, we should be coming back and it looks like we're gonna be coming back strong. Thank you guys for coming up with this.
Thank you.
Alderman Schaefer?
What was the cost per foot last year, do you remember?
Uh, I think it was like forty-two cents.
Okay. I was just wondering.
So that is a good, so like just open bids on their own, near fifty-one.
Okay. Excellent. Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion on those items? Please call the roll. Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Condon?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Peterson?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman Wimmer?
Yes.
Motion carried. Looking for a motion on item G, ordinance amending municipal code chapter eighteen, please. Alderman Wimmer?
Make the motion to approve.
Is there a second? Alderman Condon? Discussion, Alderman Wimmer?
Nothing.
Alderman Peterson?
No questions.
Alderman Condon?
Uh, yes, I, I actually have a question, um, on, in both levels for the new and the, the ones that come across.
Lateral entries?
Lateral, thank you. Um, I noticed that both, um, the psychological examination, I, I was just curious, being a licensed counselor myself, that, um, it said a licensed psychologist, that the examination needs to be done by a licensed psychologist. This may be, not be something you're even aware of, but, um, I don't personally, but there are licensed clinical professional counselors that do that type of testing too, um, as are some therapists. Um, so my question is, um, just, or I guess, comment is that you might wanna look at other licensed professionals that do that type of testing too and it'll give you more options for those type of testing.
Okay.
They, we all do the same type, uh, if you're doing that. I, I don't professionally, but, but I know that with my licensure, I'm, um, by the state, recognized as someone who could do that.
If you wanted to, Chief, we could take the word psychologist out and just leave it by a licensed.
Professional.
Professional designated and compensated by the board, which is how it reads. It's not a, that, that's a form, you know, came in from.
Yeah, I just thought I'd point out that there are other professionals that do that.
I have no problem with that. I do.
It's a good idea.
Alderman Santee?
I have no questions.
Alderman Glab?
Nothing.
Alderman Schaefer?
No questions.
Alderman Curry?
Uh, yeah, a question on, uh, sorry. You know, I, I.
Alderman Curry, I'm so sorry, I meant to, no one can hear you, I'm so sorry.
All right, well, um, we basically, from what I understood from this, uh, and I, and I certainly, um, certainly go understand that we wanna try to roll these rules together into, and we wanna put it all in the ordinance, rather than having police commission rules and ordinance and the possibility of the, so I, so I got all that. And then the lateral entry, that all makes sense. There were some comments in here about, uh, cha, I, I guess, at least from when I got out, there, there's changes to promotion and discipline for non-bargaining unit members. Promotion, what we've done is, you know, in the past, you've allowed promotional testing and no matter how they scored, they made the final eligibility list, both for promotion and entry. You know, we're not gonna get down to someone who scores a fifty on an entry exam. We're gonna, we wanted to have a line of demarcation where we're not gonna consider them for higher render or promotional, we get to that point. So we, we created a scoring system for both lateral and for sergeant's exam where if you scored below that, we wanted a minimum standard in there, basically, the scoring. So, so is that the only change here to? For the scoring, yes. To the, the discipline and the? Um, the other thing we wanted in there is, is, um, for probation, it had word verbiage in there. A probationary new hire can be terminated without cause, that's just the state statute. So if they don't make it to probation, um, they don't have bargaining, uh, coverage on something like that. We also had probationary sergeants, we had a probationary period for sergeants. We feel that if they're being demoted, they should have some of the recourse than just me saying they didn't make it. They should, they should be able to go to the police commission and have some kind of appeal process for that. You know, that, I thought that was something that was important. Is that then, those are the changes that? I guess when I read through it, it was, it would've been nice, I guess, to, to see this with, say, a marked up copy or some, what the changes actually were. Cause when you try to go, you take a, a ordinance that's, you know, several pages long here and try to figure out, okay, there's changes, what are those changes? In general terms. Yeah, in general terms, I mean, I got it, you kinda understand the comments, but the specifics, you know, I just think you can't follow it. And of course, we're being asked to approve it, so that's where I was having struggles with it. All right, thank you.
Any further discussion on item G? Seeing none, please call the roll. Alderman Wimmer?
Yes.
Alderman Condon?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a motion to approve a use variance to allow a financial institution at thirty-three forty Shoppers Drive. Ross?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, council is being asked to consider a use variance to allow a financial institution at thirty-three forty Shoppers Drive. For the zoning ordinance, a financial institution is not permitted and not a permitted use in the C-five highway commercial zoning district, therefore, a use variance is required. Detailed information regarding this request is provided in the agenda supplement.
Thank you. Looking for a motion on this item? Alderman Schaefer?
I'll make the motion to, uh, approve this, uh, use variance at thirty-three forty Shoppers Drive.
Thank you. Is there a second? Alderman Curry? Discussion, Alderman Schaefer?
Uh, I didn't have any questions. It's a unique spot going into the, the mall area, so hopefully, uh, they can be successful at that spot. That's all I have.
Thank you, Alderman Curry?
No question.
Alderman Wimmer?
No concerns.
Alderman Peterson?
How does a spot like this get there? I mean, that was kinda bad planning for it. But you have a, that's small of a, what's it supposed to be?
It was a mattress door.
It was a mattress door, yeah.
Yeah, really?
Yeah, that's what it was.
This way. You can't set them up this way. You're going to put down what's, you know. Okay, I mean, it was just, that, that's, okay, no more questions.
Alderman Condon?
I don't know, it's just dice that something kept it in there.
Alderman Santee?
That's the smallest space in it, right, square footage wise compared to everything, or is there something?
There's one other space next to Morises, to the east of Morises, that's a really small corner spot too.
And it's, what's in there?
I think that's bacon, that's the.
What's bacon?
There's only one other bacon out there.
All right, thank you.
Alderman Glab?
Yeah, just, I, you know, why the ordinance was created in the first place and, uh, this isn't really an integral spot, uh, I think. One of the reasons that we had, uh, created that ordinance in the first place was we spent all that money building our infrastructure to go down thirty-one and then we wind up with a bank on a corner of one of our most prime spots. That's when, you know, the outcry first came and then it took a little while, but we, we created the ordinance. I don't have a problem with this, other than it's not the ideal thing that I'd like to see in a shopping center, but then again, in today's world and everything changing, things are different, you know, and, uh, I can see why they would want that particular spot considering the ones that are available around there because there is a lot of high traffic with a big box next door. So, again, I don't have any problems with it, uh, not saying it's the perfect world, but nothing is, so.
Any further discussion on the item? Seeing none, please call the roll. Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Condon?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman Peterson?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Wimmer?
Yes.
Motion carried. The next item is a motion to approve, number one, a municipal bike path improvements, construction engineering services agreement for federal participation with H.R. Green Incorporated for an amount not to exceed thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars and ninety cents. And two, a local agency agreement for federal participation. And three, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the City of McHenry and the State of Illinois appropriation funds for the municipal bike path improvement project.
I will, I'll keep this relatively brief, if, brief, if you can recall, we did, we were awarded a Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program grant for an amount of three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. This is all the corresponding paperwork that goes with it, the checks and balances through I.D.O. And I'll be happy to answer any questions as well as Chad Piper from H.R. Green, who is overseeing this, uh, project for us. Hopefully, we will, uh, go through this and we could look to have this installed towards the end of the summer as a next step in the, uh, site plan for the recreation center.
Thank you. Looking for a motion on the item? Alderman Wimmer?
I'll make a motion to approve this as presented.
Is there a second, Alderman Schaefer?
Second.
Discussion, Alderman Wimmer?
That's great, we got the money, we can use it.
Thank you.
Hopefully, it will be done this year.
Alderman Peterson?
How much is our share? Do we have a total?
Uh, just over eighty thousand is our share, right?
Yes. That's the, that's the not to exceed amount, that was, uh, the twenty percent match on the grant.
Thank you.
Alderman Condon?
Just excited to see this moving forward along the rec side.
Alderman Santee?
What was our amount, um, for phase one on this? Have we got ten, Mary? I don't remember that.
I do not remember off the top of my head. How did I have that with me?
Less than eighty-nine seven-ten.
I'm sorry, I don't have it with me right now.
Well, this, this amount is thirty-nine, nine, twenty-seven, and the total's eighty-nine, seven, ten, so it would've been, uh, fifty thousand dollars.
Okay. And, and that's, and, and, and this is the final portion for engineering on this project?
Right.
Yes, this is the construction phase.
Okay, thanks.
Alderman Glab?
I just wanna say it's, uh, enhancement for the rec center, like Billups said, but, uh, it's also a enhancement for the whole municipal.
For the whole complex.
The whole complex. It's just another key integral part.
Thank you. Alderman Schaefer?
No questions.
Alderman Curry?
No questions.
Any further discussion on this item? Please call the roll. Alderman Wimmer?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Condon?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Peterson?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Chad. The next item is the mayor's statement of reports. Excuse me. Last week, we kind of moved into summer mode. The Memorial Day ceremony that was planned by the combined veterans organizations led by the P.L.A.V. was a beautiful ceremony, um, very, very well attended, um, and, and a lot of new interesting things, a flyover, and it was, it was a very, very nice ceremony. Um, Monday night, or I'm sorry, Thursday night was the first city band concert, also extremely well attended. For the first one, we were very happy with that. The farmer's market is just wildly successful this year. Our employee, Tina Canaway, has kinda took the lead on that and she's doing an excellent job. So people are really enjoying Thursday night at the park. Um, I urge you to, to come on out and see what it's all about. Everybody's very, very excited about what's going on there. This weekend, we, uh, have the Soapbox Derby on Saturday and on Sunday from one to four-thirty is Taste of Downtown, Taste of McHenry. So we're kind of in, uh, full swing, right, Bill?
Yeah, we're full, we're slowing down.
So, um, I hope you're able to attend some of those events. Um, that's all I have this evening. Are there any committee reports tonight? Alderman Schaefer?
Uh, there's a public works committee meeting, uh, next time we meet on June twentieth at five thirty P.M. here.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Seeing none, any staff reports this evening?
Yeah, the lawyer's staff report.
That's under.
If you want.
Any staff reports now? Any future agenda items?
Speaking of the, uh, park, did we start, uh, mosquito spray in the park yet?
We have not.
Is, is that scheduled to start soon, cause I know they're out.
We, uh, until it becomes more of a nuisance, we, you know, we, we do monitor those through the light trap, but our cooperative that we have with McHenry Township, um, so we'll keep an eye. Um, so we'll keep an eye on it and then we'll do special event spraying.
Okay.
Typically, it hasn't happened until closer to the fourth of July that we're, if, if it's, if it's needed, we'll moderate and do that on a special.
I think it's, it's probably the first couple, we've had actually like rainouts in the past few years and then we've had two good weather days for the first two. Okay, thank you.
I have four employees go on Thursday to get certified to put the brick ads in the storm sorrel and we'll start that next week.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other future agenda items, Alderman Curry?
Yeah, yeah, whenever it was, a few weeks ago, we, we got a letter on, uh, video gaming and in that, it talks about, uh, that if council prefers to have the topic addressed through, you know, changes to municipal code or zoning ordinance, it's recommended you refer to community development. I guess the question is, how do we get to that point to decide that? Do we need to have a committee at the whole or, or something? Council's gonna decide if we need to talk about it, I guess, in a meeting.
I think in the letter, if I'm not mistaken, uh, we were looking for consensus, we wanted you to let us know if you wanted it to go to community development and I don't know, did you hear from anybody?
Uh, yeah, I, I have three council members, I believe, but if the consensus is to go to committee, then we can schedule for the community development committee.
So I guess I'd ask you for consensus right now, uh, could you please indicate by raising your hand if you'd like this to go to committee? So I see only three hands. All right. Okay, sorry, I have one minute. Any other reports this evening, any future agenda items, I'm sorry. Seeing none, I'm looking for motion to go on executive session to discuss the purchase or lease of real property by the public body. Alderman Wimmer?
Sure.
Is there a second? Alderman Schaefer?
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll. Alderman Wimmer?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Peterson?
Yes.
Alderman Condon?
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay.
No.